It's 6:29. I just started a minute or seconds early, I should say. There you go, 6:30.
Okay, I call tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order, and this is also a public hearing for receiving unanticipated revenue. And we'll start with the public hearing. So we have received two more FEMA reimbursements. The one for the public hearing today, can you refresh my mind of the exact amount?
It was $69,909, I believe, maybe two cents.
Okay. And then we also received notice in the last week that we received almost a quarter of a million dollars. Do you have the exact amount or do I want to look it up?
You need to know. I'll get there when I have all my stuff in order, so I two
That's what I'm remembering, two, two something, but
Yeah, I don't remember.
Well, over $200,000. We'll get the exact amount in our meeting.
240 or something like that?
Close to 240, I think. So it's good. We're getting reimbursement for the mitigation work on the roads from
Generally, we didn't do this because most people license their dogs, but
all the damage that was done with the rain last July.
The repair work. I went through the system and I noticed that there were quite a few
The repair work, yes, excuse me, you're correct, the repair work.
dogs not registered. There's 29 total.
With the $69,909 and two cents,
So by doing this warrant, it allows me to send out a final notice to those people who have not registered their dogs.
it would go into our general fund. And then when we have the next town meeting, we can look at our budget to see if any gets moved to a capital reserve account.
They're supposed to be registered by April 1st. I sent out a reminder, I sent out a postcard.
But for right now, it goes into our fund, and that's where our expenses are coming too. We'll need to cover
So this is kind of the last notice.
all the money we've been putting out.
They they, some towns will actually send their animal control to take the dogs. Obviously, that's not our
Do we have any public comments? I make a motion that we accept
that's not our point. Our point is that
this reimbursement from FEMA, the $69,909 and two cents.
there's a state statute, you have to prove rabies, you have to license your dogs. So if you guys are in agreement with this, then I just need So I believe that's correct. a majority of the board to sign it.
I'll second it.
What happens if they don't respond? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They just keep collecting fines. Good.
Okay, now on with our meeting. Okay, I mean, because it could be the dog's deceased.
Yes, well, and in all of the reminders that I send out, if you no longer have the dog for any reason, let me know, and some people Checks. call, some people email, some people have come in. So if they don't have the dog, I just need to know, but these people have not responded at all. Civil forfeiture, that's what it's called. And we've never done it before, again, because most people register their dogs, and I'm like, what are we supposed to do with a bunch of dogs? Right? And it wasn't until I was at the conference at one of my classes that they were like, no, you should do this, because if you don't, then people just they continue to not register their dogs. They just don't do it. So I thought, okay, well, perhaps.
It's a good way to make sure they're vaccinated.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's almost like the leaning process, you know?
Yeah.
One of those things that is done.
Yes, that's the, um, the ever so short stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Where the towns combine. Legal and assessing. Which balance include the tan?
Yes, the tan deposit, yes.
It busts in my throat.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
So in the past, we've never done the warrant for unlicensed dogs. Generally, we didn't do this because most people license their dogs, but I went through the system and I noticed that there were quite a few dogs not registered. There's 29 total. So by doing this warrant, it allows me to send out a final notice to those people who have not registered their dogs. They're supposed to be registered by April 1st. I sent out a reminder, I sent out a postcard. So this is kind of the last notice. They they, some towns will actually send their animal control to take the dogs. Obviously, that's not our that's not our point. Our point is that there's a state statute, you have to prove rabies, you have to license your dogs. So if you guys are in agreement with this, then I just need a majority of the board to sign it.
What happens if they don't respond?
They just keep collecting fines.
Okay, I mean, because it could be the dog's deceased.
Yes, well, and in all of the reminders that I send out, if you no longer have the dog for any reason, let me know, and some people call, some people email, some people have come in. So if they don't have the dog, I just need to know, but these people have not responded at all. Civil forfeiture, that's what it's called. And we've never done it before, again, because most people register their dogs, and I'm like, what are we supposed to do with a bunch of dogs? Right? And it wasn't until I was at the conference at one of my classes that they were like, no, you should do this, because if you don't, then people just they continue to not register their dogs. They just don't do it. So I thought, okay, well, perhaps.
It's a good way to make sure they're vaccinated.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's almost like the leaning process, you know?
Yeah.
One of those things that is done.
I make a motion that we sign the warrant for collecting for pursuing registration of unregistered dogs.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have, um, do you want to do meeting minutes before the bean thing?
Sure.
Just kind of going with things that need to be signed, but meeting minutes from Monday, September 8th, working session.
I make a motion that we approve the working session meeting minutes from September 8th.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regular meeting minutes from September 15th.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from September 15th. All in favor? Aye.
Working session meeting minutes from the 22nd.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the working session on September 22nd. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, now we can get into the
Okay. So now for the bean property, this is sale of the small lot to Carol and Pamela Bean.
Yes.
Everything should be all set?
Yes.
Execute the documents.
They came in and signed the agreement and deposit receipt for the sale. Um, so someone from the board needs to sign that document, and then majority of the board needs to sign the quitclaim deed.
Okay. Is this the one that came from?
Yes, that came from, what's wrong?
He's got Chalkor at the Hinnaker Town Office. He's got his payable directly to the auctioneer.
That came from the attorney. This is correct, Dalton. Dalton.
I make a motion that, we've already approved this transaction, but I'll just follow, just to make sure, have a motion. I make a motion that as chair, I'll sign on behalf of the select board, um, the agreement and deposit receipt document. All in favor? Aye. Make a motion that we sign the quitclaim deed for this property sale.
Certainly.
All in favor? Aye. Does make it easier to have you as a notary.
Yes.
You just have to begin, make somebody come in or to notary things. Okay, um, do we have any update on the storage for the transfer section?
Uh, installation is looking towards the end of October.
Okay, and that's for the, um,
The temporary shelter.
Temporary shelter over the mattresses.
Yep.
Okay. Do you have any update on the Do you have any update on the local election accessible voting system?
I do, I received an email from the Deputy Secretary of State and it says on here that, um, it sounds like the state will pay for the equipment for the state or in the federal election, state and federal election programming and the towns will be responsible for local programming. But she's saying that she can't predict costs because that's done by a third-party vendor, but it sounds like the state will still likely allow the towns to use their devices.
That's generous of them.
Yeah, so it sounds like we may not need to purchase a device.
Okay.
But they've not made that final decision. They said that any equipment and associated formal agreements will be delivered in twenty-twenty-six, so I think for the twenty-twenty-six budget, we just continue to carry the couple thousand dollars in case we end up having to spend it.
And there'll be some cost for programming, what was that last time?
Uh, it was six hundred dollars.
Yeah, so we need a little bit of money now, okay.
Yeah. So not, not really an answer, but an answer, I suppose.
Yeah. Okay, um, the fire department, um, EMS trust fund account titles?
Yep, when in our working session, we were going over that and you were looking in the book on the report that comes out of DRA's site for the trustees. Um, I did look at our perm file report, which comes from the DRA portal that we put information into and we have access from, and the titles are correct. Uh, fire department equipment CRF for fire, fire vehicle. And then, uh, fire EMS equipment for fire and EMS equipment.
Okay, but it looked like the amounts were back, were reversed.
No.
We looked at.
No, they weren't reversed, it's just the, the way that they were the wit, the titles made it seem like they were wrong. It can very easily be confusing, especially when you're looking at reports that the wording is off or different. It would be, I think you were looking in the town report.
I was, and I should have it right here, here it is. Because it has EMS emergency vehicle as having a balance of a little under ninety-four hundred dollars. And it has fire department equipment with a balance of fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, that's not right.
So those seem like they're reversed. So it's the amounts, not the titles so much.
Yeah, I think vehicle needs to say equipment and equipment needs to be up there, but I'm looking at the perm file and this is correct.
The perm file for a while.
This is correct, fire vehicle, equipment.
Okay.
And then you have EMS fire equipment. So this is vehicle and this is equipment. It's just the wording that they chose to use there.
Okay. Are there three?
No, there's two.
Okay. Because the equipment one is the one we added a few years ago.
Yep.
Which would be the one that has nine thousand and something.
No, the, oh yeah, the equipment one has the nine thousand something, yep.
But the vehicle one
Has.
The fifty-eight thousand, so the titles are wrong in the, in four.
Which is coming off of the MS nine.
So we, they need to check.
So Sue needs to check it.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I said before, but then I looked at this and said, no, it's right, but Sue does need to check it in the system that they enter.
Right, because they, the trustees of the trust funds enter that, we don't.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I will get in touch with Sue.
Thanks. Okay, the building committee, I don't think we have any updates since our last meeting.
Yep, just the reminder that we have our first workday this Saturday.
Exactly.
Yep.
Like starting about twelve to twelve-thirty.
Mm-hmm.
And the work that's going to be done is replacing the candle set open the windows.
If we were able to get them.
If we're able to get them.
Yeah, I don't know yet.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if we can get them yet.
Okay.
Um, power washing, the bricks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, painting the fire department door and the kitchen and the boiler door, right? Does that?
That's the same door. The boiler room door.
The boiler room, what about the police station door? That is repairing the metal on that.
That's repairing the metal.
And the grate in front of it.
Yep.
And then the roof that goes over the boiler and the kitchen door, um, fixing that so that it's, um, brace better and have a better roof.
Yep.
Did I leave anything out?
The outside lights.
That's right.
Um, I did replace two of those lights with motion detector lights, but they're recessed so far into those fixtures, I don't think they're going to work. In addition to the fact that we would have to still leave that switch on, that light on all the time, which controls the lights inside as well as outside.
Unless we put a motion detector inside too.
Correct. Which you can't do because we have we have, you can't really put a motion detector inside because, um, they're fluorescent, they're
Okay.
Yeah.
Mandy has a
Who?
Mandy had a guy that wouldn't that was interested.
Oh yeah, she, she's, I think she sent me his information.
I know the gentleman, he's, he's a good electrician.
Okay, so I'll reach out to him and see, because no one else is, I mean, I've, I've had multiple people come look at it and no one has sent me any pricing, so.
Yep.
I believe she sent me that, so I'll get in touch with them.
Well, it was worth a, a try with the light bulbs.
Yeah, and I'll just return the light bulbs.
Well, what it is, yeah, it's the eyes themselves are the bad, it's not the, not the bulbs.
Which you can replace, whi- which can be replaced, we can't replace.
They're old, they're beyond, those type bulbs are just beyond really.
Yeah.
They, they'll come out with the, the whole thing, it's a whole different type of bulb now that, yeah, they're all different.
But I did get the solar.
They don't have much power either, so.
I did get the solar light to light up that side of the parking lot, so that we don't have to worry about the two lights on the side of the building. Unless this electrician can do it for an acceptable price to the board, then I'm all for it. I'll call him tomorrow.
Yeah, the worst thing is, um, wintertime, those don't work as good, the that are the kind
Solar?
They don't work as good.
The solar?
Not in the winter because we got so much dark.
In the winter, it's hard.
Yeah, they really, they don't have enough juice to daylight to keep them.
Well, and I mean, the good thing is, is they don't have, they're not on a lot.
Right.
But, um, I think the ones that I was looking at only require five hours of charging time. So I, I'll call the electrician and see what he proposes, if anything.
Do we want to set a threshold for coming back to the board? So that she could just go ahead and move forward, if, you know, if the electrician come out right away, then
Just get it done.
Get it done, exactly.
Um, I mean, those electricians are hard to get anyway.
Exactly, she's been riding for a year.
More than that.
Two years, yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah.
And you know, we either leave the lights out on here or it's really unsafe walking out at night.
Yeah.
And the parking lot needs lights, so I think just go ahead and do it?
Yep.
Okay.
Good. All right, so we'll work on the other items for the, uh, building committee then.
Yeah. Good. Uh, Tom's not here to give an update from the Conservation Commission.
I can give an update for the meeting this Tuesday, Thursday. Um, it's the private well workshop that's happening here at six PM. Um, they will go over the process, uh, what's to be expected of the people who are going to have their private wells tested and those, uh, residents will be required to choose a date to drop off their samples because the lab can only do thirty samples at each time and the, well, the water samples have to be tested within twenty-four hours of taking, so they'll go over all of this, uh, at the meeting on Thursday here at six o'clock.
And I don't know if you
Which isn't really
Bomber planning on attending that? Okay, I am. Um, is it limited to town residents?
They are actually, uh, doing it for Dalton
Lyman?
Lyman and Monroe.
Okay.
Those are the three towns that have been grouped together for our meeting.
So somebody from Lancaster wanted to come, can they?
I don't believe so, but they can, you can give them their con, the woman's contact information.
Okay.
And I would assume maybe we just ask at the meeting on Thursday, they're trying to do it in sections.
Yeah.
So I would assume that if Lancaster doesn't know anything about it at this point, that they just probably haven't gotten to them yet.
Okay.
Because they did a section, they did Littleton and other sections and they're trying to hit all of the towns in the North Country.
Okay.
So, good question for Thursday.
Yep. And Planning Board hasn't met since our last meeting. And I don't think there's anything big on the agenda for Wednesday, is there?
I don't think so.
I haven't seen anything.
It's been pretty quiet.
Yep.
Um, I did speak with Reed from Under Canvas, which kind of fits under Planning Board.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he said, obviously, they received all of their state permits, they've been working on the property up there. They're starting to install permanent buildings, they've built a handful or two, if not more, of the platforms for the tents, which obviously won't start being installed until spring. And he's hoping for a, I think he said a June opening publicity for, uh, the White Mountain Under Canvas location is going to be released sometime the first week or so of October.
Oh.
So, like
Like, in a week or so?
Yes.
Hmm.
Like their launch or whatever they do for public relations, so. Otherwise, he said he was pretty happy, he's looking for his, uh, land use change tax bill, I said, oh, it's coming, don't worry.
Okay.
Hopefully this year it's coming. I will talk to the assessor about that.
Okay. And then we haven't had another host community agreement since the last select board meeting. There is a, um, open forum this Saturday from ten until noon to get input from the council people in terms of, if there's something they'd like to see in a agree, in an agreement. So Saturday is a busy day.
Yes, it is.
Forum and the work, working, uh, session in the afternoon. Okay, with the solar panels, they're already installed, right, are we?
Solar panels are installed, I believe they're working on the other things, the panel, the breakers, the all of the different stuff for the, uh, backup generator and such, I signed, um, a document today for Barrington Solar to submit to Eversource, letting them know that everything has been installed and this is kind of Eversource's final sign-off on it on the project before everything gets
And they did, they have to do a conversion or something?
Yes.
And come out and put a new meter in?
Yes, they do all that stuff.
And that usually, I think it takes them two or three weeks to get that done?
They may have already started that process.
Okay.
Because a week or so ago, they said they were waiting on Eversource and it took two to three weeks.
Yeah.
So that could be the process he was talking about, I don't know.
Okay.
So we're almost there.
Yeah, we just missed the long days in the summer, but that's all right, it'll be better for
We'll take what we get.
Yep, exactly. And then, there hasn't been anything further on the hazard mitigation program yet, we're still waiting
Yes.
On that.
Yes.
And when we get a draft, then we'll bring it here so we can look at things that we should do to be better prepared, the generator is a big thing, getting that installed. Okay.
I know the doors are heavy.
Hmm?
I know the doors are heavy.
Yeah, yeah, no, if you're gonna, yeah, do that manually, that's not good. Um, so for FEMA those of you who joined us, we had a public hearing the beginning of the meeting and we accepted the latest reimbursement from FEMA of, um,
First, first one. Well, the second one.
The second one, so the latest one, is I think what I meant to say, I may not have said that.
You said latest, but it's technically not the latest.
That's true. It's the second one, because we'd have another one, I was gonna, you're right. Um, so sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and nine dollars in some sense, so we accepted that money. And we've received, um, a third payment of
Two hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty cents, we received on Friday.
Okay, two thirty-three?
Two fifty-five, thirty.
So we will have to schedule another public hearing for that because we have to post it in a newspaper and all of that certain timeframe, so you'll schedule that for the soon as possible for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition to the funds that we received on Friday, our last two of the four projects finally hit federal FEMA obligation. So at this point, we're just waiting for the state to send us the award letter. Once that award letter gets to us, I fill out a couple documents and send it back to the state and then they, um, process payment for the expenses we've already submitted. So right now, um, one of the projects uh, the two projects that were just most recently hit obligation were Smith Road and, uh, what we call Roads Two, which is a group of twelve different roads. Um, so for Smith Road, we're looking at receiving, um, immediately receiving about three hundred and fifteen thousand. And then, um, for Roads Two, which is the culmination of the twelve roads, we're looking at approximately two hundred forty-four thousand.
Good. And the cost of Smith Road was actually more than that, right, we got paid, the first money we received of forty and some thousand was covering the engineering, right?
Forty-three thousand covered the engineering, we received that early this year. Three hundred fifteen thousand is the gross amount that there are, are the federal amount that they're covering for Smith Road.
Okay.
So that gives us approximately three hundred and fifty-eight thousand total that they're covering, including the engineering. I am working with them to see if we could get additional engineering costs covered because Ekman played the part of owner rep for the project. So I'm arguing the point that since we didn't have, we don't have a highway crew person or a public works person who sat there and to oversee the job day-to-day that they should pay us for that, it's not technically engineering services that they did. So I, I'm, I'm working on selling that point, um, to them to try and get more money for Smith Road.
And what are our costs for Smith Road, do we have a total?
Um.
Is this, they take like seventy-five percent of our costs or?
Yes.
Okay.
So FEMA covers seventy-five percent of your, um, proven cost.
Okay.
Um, in addition to that, they will cover my cost, once the project, the project work itself or the contract repair work itself is completed. They will cover my costs that I've spent in managing all of it, so I've not started putting all of that together yet. Um, in addition to that, there may be some additional money that the state, a state program will cover, not under the federal program.
Right. That's a big help.
It is. It is, um. So in addition to that. I kind of pulled together. Everything that we've spent. To date through, well, basically through, through nine fifteen, so in twenty twenty four, we spent approximately five hundred and twenty eight thousand. To repair roads, including fuel and labor, which were not coded to the emergency cost code. In twenty twenty five so far, we've spent. Five hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. That includes Smith Road. And that includes approximately twelve thousand seven hundred dollars of our labor. So Adam continues to give me details on where they're putting the stone. Um, how many hours, the equipment, so on and so forth, so. Um, I mean, he just gave me a sheet this morning, which will literally reap us a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. In reimbursement money, so um. It all adds up, so we just, I told him, I just need him to keep feeding me the details, so I make sure that we're getting the maximum reimbursement allowable. So once we receive the state award letters for Smith Road and Roads Two, we should be seeing another substantial chunk of money. Hopefully another four or five hundred thousand dollars.
So just with what you've articulated for approximate numbers, it looks like we're looking at getting nine hundred and five thousand reimbursement.
Plus whatever mitigation work we do, that's not, that doesn't include any mitigation work that they've approved.
And those are round, I just rounded.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's costing the town money, but. Compared to all the work that's being done on the road, our share of it is manageable, I mean, it's definitely.
Well, and we would have spent a lot of that money, we would have spent anyway. You know, doing minor repairs on the roads or whatever, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know for sure, I'm not the road agent, but I would think.
Oh, because we had to, I mean, we had to repair, I mean, Smith Road is an anomaly, but the others definitely had to be repaired.
Yeah.
And I know how much work it was a few years ago when we did the ARPA funding during COVID, I was like fifty thousand. Because I did all of that, so thank you for all this work and effort, and FEMA's more complex than other grants.
At least we're past the federal side. So that, that gives me a nice warm fuzzy.
Yeah, and mitigation work, are we still waiting on headwalls?
We're still waiting on headwalls, hopefully they're arriving next week. I know they've been working on Blakesley and starting to do rip wrap up there, so.
I know we've had some of the. Material they put down, that was one of the invoices we signed.
Yep.
Okay, any other road repair updates?
Nope.
Okay. Motor vehicle price estimation website proposal.
Hmm. So, did I send this to you guys? I don't remember if I did.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So, um, it was just something that I asked one of our vendors, this is Avatar, we use them for our um. For assessing our tax collecting and our clerk work. Um, a lot of people will call. And inquire about how much it costs to register a car, I just got a new car, how much is it gonna cost, so on and so forth. Which is generally not a big deal, because we don't have seventy thousand residents. So, um, I had just asked if they had such a program that. Residents could go online and do it themselves, they do, of course. Um, but it's a fifteen hundred dollar charge for the. For the program and then it's fifteen hundred dollars a year maintenance and we don't have that many residents, I just. I don't see it as being um. A wise option for three thousand dollars of the town's money. We just don't have that many residents and it's just as easy for them to come in or call and give me the information and I give them a price quote. Right out of the program, so.
I think I'd agree with that.
Good idea, but um.
You know, if it was a one time.
Yeah.
Fee of.
Right.
You know, you hundred something.
Yep.
But that's a lot of money.
So I think it's a pass for us.
Okay. I agree with that. Okay. Um, do you have any other updates?
I added two things on mine as I was going through some information and I'm glad that Terry's here, because. I was gonna ask her if she got the other surveyor proposal.
Nope. He uh, emailed me and said, this was a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And he said, um, can we find a time? In the next week to meet at the cemetery and I said, sure. I said, I'm available like at seven in the evening, which now it's already getting dark, but. Seven in the evening and I'm here on the weekends, I'm available, and he never got back to me. So I'm like, okay.
Yeah, we.
Do we go with the other one?
I would suggest that you guys, you know, take a look at it and.
And we did get this one from uh, Mark on September first and at the last meeting, we did say that we give the gentleman a couple of weeks to.
Yep.
Come back and give us a quote, so I do have the Vanderhayden quote here, it's. A third of what we anticipated it to be, so with the discount that he's graciously, you know, offering the town, so.
So depending on, I don't.
Yes.
Look at the, look at his estimate, it doesn't have much detail. On it, um, but yeah, I'd like to talk with him and just make sure that. He's covering what we would like to have, um, what we'd like to see for a plan and. And um. Yeah, just in case he decides, well, maybe I should increase it, but not that I want him to, but uh.
But at least we have that.
I want to be realistic, yeah.
We have that playing field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did. The other survey, uh, surveyor, I did say that they would like to, that you guys would like to have it wrapped up by the end of the month. So.
Here we are.
Here we are, end of the month.
Yes.
And if something comes in tomorrow, then.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of.
Well, and we do have the gentleman who purchased a bunch of lots last year that we're, we still have his check, because. No surveying has ever happened over there, so.
And we shouldn't be holding checks for a year, because they're.
Well, and what'll happen is we'll send it back to him or he'll send us a new one and we'll avoid it, but. He, I think what he was trying to do was make good on the fact that he wanted. The lots and that he wanted to be able to choose them, I think is probably why he wrote the check.
Yeah, he had a particular area in the cemetery that had not been mapped yet. Yeah.
I make a motion that we. Authorize Terry as the um cemetery section to proceed with this agreement with um, Mark Vanderhayden.
Awesome.
And to work with him on the project. Um. I think if there's a, you know, if there's a little bit more detail, are you seeing a big increase expense or?
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't, he's not showing much detail. Um, and I've never. Been involved with um, having somebody else.
Coming.
Survey the cemeteries.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I know from the planning board perspective, he's really easy to work with.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say if it even goes up. You know, like.
If he takes his discount away, you're still.
It's still cheaper than what we had expected.
Still cheaper than we had expected, unless of what we budgeted.
Yeah.
So I make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we leave the amount that I put in that proposed budget?
Yes.
Leave it in there?
Yes, because he may come back and go, oh.
I can't do it till spring.
Well, or, oh, I didn't know you wanted all that.
Yeah, yeah.
I need to increase this or I need to take away the.
Yeah.
But he's very, uh, I've worked with him too and he's very straightforward and.
Yep.
Yeah, he's easy to work with, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
The other thing that I added was, uh, received it in email and we've kind of talked about stuff like this before, using the. The building, but again, this is a business who's asking to use it, so I feel it's something that the board should approve. Um, uh, the owner of North Star Canine Connection, she's located in Whitefield. She's looking at exploring options for a new location that could be more permanent setup for her classes, she does uh, dog training. She uses the community room in Whitefield right now, but with the after school program, each class is full, she has to set up and break down and do everything for each class and it's. Getting challenging, so she was wondering if the gym slash cafeteria might be able for use for a constant training space. Um, she'd be happy to sk- to discuss scheduling, using the facility or any other requirements.
Um, what equipment is she talking about, does she have like agility equipment?
No, I think the, the setup and breakdown for her is probably the tables and chairs that are set up for the after school program for Whitefield.
Okay.
Because that's the space she's using.
Okay.
So if you're doing dog training, you can't have a bunch of tables and chairs in the middle of the room.
Right, but I was just.
I don't think.
Get from the other way around.
Yeah, I don't think she does agility type stuff, but I can certainly talk to her and ask, I mean, obviously she'd have to.
Take that down.
Take that down.
Yeah.
Yes, because other people use the gym. Um, I know we had talked about it before with a school, thinking about doing it, uh, uh, what type of paddle? Some paddle ball.
Oh, the pickleball.
Pickleball, thank you, thinking paddle ball, pickleball group using it, um. I had someone who wanted to do basketball training, who at one point said he was interested and I told him, you know, there'd be a small fee and to get back to me if he was interested, I never heard back from him. So. I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean, I think that there are a lot of missed revenue opportunities that the town needs to consider. Um, not that the town is for profit, but every little bit of revenue that we raise decreases the expenses that the taxpayers pay. And I think we need to look at that.
It all says heat and light.
Heat and light and, right, I mean, it'll help cover expenses that are covered by taxpayers.
What about insurance?
They would have to get insurance and we'd have to make sure that.
Because so.
Primax is okay with it.
Yeah, so we're not stuck with it, that's.
Yeah, and I would think that they would have to do that with Whitefield as well. And I don't know who Whitefield uses for insurance, but.
We might want to make sure we have proof of their insurance.
Oh, yeah, just like any other, yeah, just like anyone else that, any other company that uses the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And have we talked about, I think we've talked about price before, but I'm not remembering.
We did talk about price with the pickleball people and I don't, because it was last fall around this time.
Deal.
I, I think we said it was like a hundred or two hundred, couple hundred dollars a month, but they were looking at using it, I think, two or three times a week.
Either.
Correct.
This group of people who would just.
Right. Were looking at an indoor place to play.
Yeah.
Um. So I can reach out to her and say, yeah, you know, we'd be interested in hearing about it, what are, what are your thoughts and see. What her thoughts are, I could see if she wants to come to a meeting and talk to the board. I can.
You know, obviously, there'd be cleanup.
Oh, yeah.
Um. I'm not. I don't have a number right in, that's coming to mind in terms of what would be fair and reasonable for charging.
Well, and like I said, we can always ask Whitefield or ask her what Whitefield charges, she may come back to us and say Whitefield doesn't charge her at all. And I don't really know if that's. I don't know if that's something that the town would want to do.
Oh, you're trying me, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You got, yeah, you know, you gotta think about that.
Right.
I think we should have some.
Absolutely.
I mean, not.
There'll be some kind of.
Not unreasonable, but something.
Do you want me to reach out to her and ask what her thoughts are and then?
Then bring it back, yeah.
Maybe see if she wants.
Another way around.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah, I mean, she would know what, or. Could you call the um, town admin in Whitefield?
Probably.
And how soon is she looking for a?
She didn't say.
Decision? And conceptually, I think it's fine, it was, we could work on the details, what do you think?
Love what I'm up on.
Yeah.
I will get some information and bring it to you guys at the working session, how's that?
That sounds good.
Because then if you want her to come in, I can schedule her to come in two weeks from now.
The next meeting, okay, that would be good. I mean, obedience training for dogs is a good thing.
Absolutely. Well, and like I said, there's a lot of opportunities for Dalton, I think that. Haven't necessarily been looked at before, that would be good opportunities, so.
Well, the gym should be used, I mean, that.
Yeah, I mean.
It's too bad to have that big gym in there and no one's using it.
I mean, it'd be nice to have kids playing basketball in there, people playing pickleball.
Well, and it'll help, you know, fix the ceiling, fix the lights, fix, it helps pay for that stuff.
Yep.
We do need another hoop, um.
Yeah.
In there, it's, it's not really that expensive to fix it.
Yeah.
We do need one though, because it's, you can't, there's no, no net to it, no net to it, no more.
Well, there's no, there's no hooks, the hoop itself is broken.
Hoop.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Yeah. So I would say that we would have to.
The only other thing. Only other thing I have for new business is we did get the education tax warrant amount from the state. Um, it's one hundred seventy three thousand two hundred sixty three dollars. Last year, or I should say this year, it's one seventy eight, one sixty seven, so it went down slightly.
So you said the education tax warrant from the state?
From the state, so this is the part that the state covers.
Okay. So we don't have anything from the S A U yet?
No, and I reached out to D R A to get a feeler on that and I haven't gotten a response yet.
Okay, so how about the county?
Nope, nothing.
Do they, do they have an idea when they're going to set their tax?
Uh.
No?
I asked D R A. I haven't, I didn't get a response yet.
Okay. Because I think we're targeting October for setting our tax rate.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Any other updates?
Not for me.
New business here? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Um. And for people on Zoom, could you introduce yourself?
What?
For the people on Zoom, give up your name.
Yeah, I am, Michael Ryan, Martin Redo, Han Ro. Um, in regards to that pets, uh, if you own a pet, you have to register it?
Yeah.
You spoke about.
Dog, dog registration.
It's just strictly dogs?
Yes, that is the state statute, it's for dogs.
Oh, okay, and, and uh. Is there a kind of brochure that explains everything?
No, it's a state statute, so it's just a law that you have to, your dog has to have rabies and that you have to register it with your town by April first of every year.
Okay, that's how it works.
Yes.
All right.
The statute is posted on the bulletin board out there.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just curious about that.
No.
You don't have to register your cat or any other, just door, just door.
Just dogs.
Old fish.
Yep.
Yep.
Oogie doogie.
State law.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, what happens if you don't register the door, uh?
You get fined, you get fined and your dog can be taken away from you, yes.
But the state does this?
Yes.
Very interesting.
Yep.
Well, the state wouldn't actually take the dog away.
Well, the state would be behind the dog being taken away.
But the.
But it's a response, is it a responsibility of the state, seeing it's a state law to go and. Make sure that the people register their dogs?
No, it's our responsibility as a town, because they do it through our town clerk office.
Uh, oh, so that's what that notification is all about?
Yes.
All right, if they, if they do not, uh, reply, do you notify the state?
I'm sure that there is something I would have to do to notify the state, yes. I'm sure that there is something I would have to do to notify the state, yes. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, if they do not reply, then you'd have to, then you notify the state that they never replied to your request to register the dog.
Yes.
This year.
Yes.
Okay, and have you ever run across this before?
No, that's why I said, would, this is the first time we're doing it. So I'm not sure what the next step would be.
Oh, interesting. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any other public comments?
Nope. We do have one non-public.
For?
Legal.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that we go into non-public session for a legal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
See you next time.
Good night. Can you shut the door, Terry?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll be pausing the recording for non-public.
Okay, we're back in public session. Um, I make a motion that we seal the minutes from our non-public session. All in favor? Aye. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, good night.